All right, perfect. This is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the regular council meeting for September 26th to your orders. The first order on the agenda is a call for temporary interest regarding the agenda. Are there any additions at all? Having heard none of the launch of the agenda, are there any additions or deletions?
Yeah, I just wanted to add the funding for the Dooton Regional Housing extension project.
Okay, let's call it eight point three on the agenda. Are there any other additions or deletions? Heard none. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda with the addition there?
Yes, so.
Right, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Adoption of previous meetings, regular meeting from August the 22nd and the committee of the whole meetings for September the 12th. Are there any errors or omissions in any way in the report? Heard none. Can I get a motion to accept the adoption of previous minutes?
I think most of them.
All in favor? That is carried. So, we will jump right into the meat of the table here. MOA for deletions, Emily Andrew Ruchenko. This is regards, he can't make it last minute, he had to go to Calgary. So, we'll go on to, I'm very pleased to introduce Dick Carter here, and he's going to give us a little bit of an update on the order. So, go ahead, Dick. The floor is yours.
Thank you. It's a good evening. It's a privilege. I must say an honor to be participating in this process. I have personal passions for water as an interest. And my background is a lawyer. I've been practicing law for over forty-six years. And how I got involved in this is through the mayor and the CAO, and that interest. And so, I, my perspective, I guess, would probably be best described as basically conservative. And your mayor and your CAO have discussed, I guess, me as a member of our firm, the fact that we want to do everything, working with council and making sure that everybody is in a consensus as to moving forward. But I got involved, the grants involving select engineering have been retained. And my understanding that the draft report has been circulated to the council for review and commentary. I was allowed the opportunity as a lawyer to review their report. Not so much from a legal perspective, but because of the interest in this area to discuss and provide some background. I'm pleased to say that select engineering's report confirms something that is important to you in my humble submission. And that is that it confirms that the opportunity exists for this community to become a regional water supplier in the greater area, in this west portion of the county of Dooton. And my review of their report is that select engineering confirms that. But more importantly, I find that our report is very conservative. And that's to your benefit, because it, in my humble view, understates the water opportunities that exist. The fundamental starting point is that they understand capacity under your licenses that are held by Forest B. And if there's certainly sufficient water supply for the objective which is to become the original supplier. And the benefit to Forest B by becoming the regional supplier, she gets the benefit of economies of scale. It brings down your cost per volume. And that measurement, by what water you produce to provide to communities like Orwellburg and in the surrounding areas, and the opportunity that exists in the summer villages, there is sufficient water to meet those needs of the community as well as to commercialize that opportunity. And so, the recommendations I made for the purposes of this council was to suggest that select engineering reports that completes and finalizes the report is to take advantage of these opportunities in a sense of disclosing that the estimate usage by the summer villages around Pigeon Lake is, I believe, higher than what they're estimating, because they don't take into account year-round usage by the community. And the number of permanent residents around the lake is higher than what they estimated. Therefore, the annual consumption, they primarily focused on May long weekend to Thanksgiving. There is certainly a lot of residents that actually reside in this community elsewhere. And I think that bodes well. Your movement as well into this opportunity is timely, because it takes advantage of other components but isn't referred to in large measure in the select engineering report. We all have observed probably firsthand experience as to the fires that have happened in the region. I've probably shared with some of the instances that were called upon as a community to address those. And so, this has become top of mind for many in terms of the fire opportunities. The opportunity exists for the supply of water around the community to put in stations for use where rather than having, like in the city we call Fire Islands, you have opportunities for the fire departments to have access to bulk water in close proximity to where the fires potentially could be. But I see that our province speaks well about that, and I think that's an opportunity to take advantage of as to commercializing this state. Around the lake, and I can't speak for other communities, but from my own family's perspective, we had a cottage at Pigeon Lake, and there were difficulties obtaining insurance, getting renewals of insurance because of the lack of water supply to fill up the water fire trucks when it takes so long to get the water to fill them up to get back to the fire. So, this is another brilliant opportunity. And another thing that's not addressed in the draft report that we reviewed is something that's top of mind for our federal government. I'm not talking politics here, but this thing, Geraldo, eight years ago, was a campaign platform described how they were going to help our First Nations improve the quality of the water. And the community, the First Nations community, has been highly critical, and I must say personally, rightfully so, that hasn't been addressed. So, that opportunity, I think, is where you, Mayor and Donna and I have talked about it, and they're going to have select engineering put that in. Those opportunities are not high in the sky in that there are discussions that will be held and have been initiated by parts of the First Nations in the community that are close proximity to Forest B. And it's top of mind for people like our cabinet minister, that is Randy Bossnell. Other than that, he's been spoken to by a member of our firm, and he sees that as top of mind to take advantage of that. And that's things that CAO and the mayor are working towards in consultation as to taking advantage of those opportunities. First opportunity to commercialize, in my view, to help, of course, to establish its credibility is bulk water commercialization, so that those avenues, there is a commitment, I believe, in principle to go forward to pay the study, to discuss and share and provide to you for information purposes the commercialization that we, may have already heard about the Dooton County is supported in principle over bulk water station here. Have been discussing with what I call Western diversification, both habits I heart from me. I go by the old name rather than its current name. But discussions with them about funding, which is a key piece to this as far as guidance that I've received from both the mayor and Donna is that it's not a situation where their expectation is to grow money and further burden the taxpayers to rather to take advantage of grants and both federally and provincial. And that's part of our role is to assist the management so that we get a necessary funding. Currently, I'm talking to the deputy minister, but I'll call it Western diversification, if you don't mind. Recently, you may have seen in media, both TV, radio, and newspapers, that the finance minister federally has, at the direction of the prime minister, clamped down on statutory restrictions federally. I think we all welcome that after the amount of spending. But it has an impact on our ability to access grants. And so, we're trying to develop the guidelines for accessing, and that's what's temporarily postponed this admission grant. The CAO has worked hard to put together the materials to backstop the application. We don't want to submit an application for a grant that we're certain that the funding is in place there, because we don't want to ask for money for a long time. They haven't developed policy steps, so that's why we've been unintended treading water for a few weeks to address that. But there is opportunities in addition to both federal and provincial grants to consider joint venturing. There are certainly private enterprise businesses, publicly traded companies that would dearly love to get their hands on what they consider to be a treasure, which is water licenses that this community has the foresight of getting transferred to them. So, overall, I'm optimistic that, moving one step at a time, that there will be opportunities to commercialize and access the water that you have through your licenses in order to bring down your cost of providing water to the community. There's also opportunities to work with our First Nation community. We've already been, as I mentioned, discussions with them. And just moving forward to establish your credibility, the first process was to get the bulk water to up and run. It's one step at a time, not over. Sorry, I guess the right way to put it is, you don't want to overextend your tentacles. You want to work one step at a time and go grow incrementally into raising revenue for the community. So, overall, it's at its early stages, but I'm optimistic that backed off by the select engineering report, they can be able to move forward with hearing any goals. One comment I wanted to accent specifically was on page 12. There was select engineering right in the middle of the page, and I'll just read it out to you. This is a good news story. It's not a bad news story. So, select engineering says, while we were unable to confirm the license, I'll not read the number, but transferred into the town's name from self-rerequirement. Legal advice from the town has confirmed that the transfer is in place. And what that is a reference to is our firm rendered an opinion at the request of the town. And that opinion confirms that what you thought you had, you do have. Taking the legal mug will jump out of it. That's bottom line. So, the mayor, essentially what I wanted to present at this stage, I don't know if anyone has any questions or open the question.
Yeah, no, that's perfect. I really appreciate that. You kind of hit the nail on the head there, is that now that we have the report, I mean, it's a slow process for sure. And I mean, you have to take maybe steps, and you don't go to the end result right away. You have to go in stages all along, and that's, we've talked about this among ourselves quite a bit. And this is the first stage here, and if we can get this, it will give us some very good credibility, something that we haven't had in over twenty years that we've had this license. You know, the first positive sense of, well, there's much, much more to it for sure. And if anybody has any questions in the council that they would like to direct to Dick, I'm sure that he would be more than pleased to have that.
If there were the question of the estimate of a time line, are you going to step forward with that?
So, from my perspective, I'm very disappointed I didn't come with a piece of information, because the information that I wanted was, and I put out my tentacles in terms of verbal requests was determinism to get the guidance from Western diversification as the first bucket we should get to the application. And I say this respectfully, I don't have an answer there. And I was hoping to talk to the MOA and start bridging that gap to see what avenues are available to combine these alternatives for funding for you without resorting to joint venture. Because one thing I've learned is, the short time I've been involved with the mayor and the CAO, they're jealously guarding the property and don't want to have to share revenue. To develop the own resources, essentially the guidance provided to them.
I just expect that residents will be seeing how future happens, that's why I asked.
No, the short answer was, is we were hoping to have something in place for the fall. And the game changer was frankly the restraint on the federal budget, because there were clear buckets that we could access. And frankly, Donna is a very modest person, and she, I will speak on her behalf, if you don't mind, she's done a lot of work trying to make sure that she will be able to answer the first time in all of the questions that are asked, so that it would be a big accomplishment. The deputy minister has monetary limits and has the discretion to stamp that of going back to Ottawa would provide us with the initial stages to get the bulk water plant going.
Perfect. Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, and you know, originally when we started this, we were definitely hoping to have the application in the fall and then answer sometime in late fall and possibly start something in the spring. That's what we were hoping for. Now, whether we're going to get there, that's, as Dick said, you know, things move slowly at some of these stages and with the stage of the government right now, we just depend on him. But if you don't get a rapid response, I have a very short pitch. And my perspective today was, and I was talking to young Curtis, who's suffering the effects of being in Oktoberfest in Munich and the opening of this move back. Curtis is a young lawyer that works, he's very talented and he's the brains of the operation. He just helps me with this thing. But I said to Curtis, if we don't have an answer by tomorrow, then we're going to reach out to the minister in case he will listen. We don't want to project the main application, because we phoned Donna. Her fingers are tapping on her desk and showing her impatience. So, thank you for that. Anybody else have any other questions?
No, I just have one comment. We're still making the changes to it. There's the table that has the neighboring municipalities' assets kind of listed. Water reverse osmosis system was placed in 2016, I believe. I probably have a bunch of information that my child might access missing it, but oh, 2016 is the date. There's a lot of NA's that were registered that I have answers for.
Got it.
Yeah, sweetheart, so we're ahead. I'd like to worship. When I, when I, just to add to our comment is that the First Nations in Enoch and the townspeople are very interested in water. They're very interested in working with us, and they're very interested in water under trees, which we're going to start to explore in a very unique fashion, where Mayor and I are going to go to the First Nations in Enoch. And we have a lot of valuable insights into what they want to do to not only initially set up under trees. So, it's kind of interesting in this exploratory language. So, that's a good thing. And of course, with that comes access, this is a good one. But they're very interested in the earth exploratory language. They're aware that through the color department that it's going to be there and to start those kinds of discussions and get to know each other. If anything's going to come out of it, it is basically a neighborhood. I mentioned they wanted to come to our council, and they want us to come to their council to chat, she's quoting right now, Enoch's town, both recovered members, so we'll do with that right now. But they have provided us with a council representative's file form, and they want to have those discussions. And he's kind of the knowledge keeper of Enoch. Also, I listened to him, we can use his football if there's going to be a state T six six ending tackle. So, I don't mess with him too much, sorry. So, those kind of discussions, we can have our understanding and learning. So, that'll start to come now as we move that technical direction, because if we do that sort of groundwork, it has a time. And then Mr. Wilson of the province is highly aware of what we're up to. He's highly aware of the problem that he's been over with, not to date, and was coming out soon with plans from the other province. He's also highly supportive, and when the mayor and I met, he was first of all surprised there were twenty people in the room. Wasn't expecting that, and having to do that, and he also understood that the First Nations don't have water. And part of the problem is that the federal government will put water to the nation, is up to the province to pipe it to the regional houses. The First Nations folks are now saying, we want to cut off the federal government, retire the reins. Let's just light the bullet and we pipe right to the house, because there's so many obstacles. I mean, we can't affect everybody in Alberta, but we can affect our neighbors. That's kind of, we're heading in slow baby steps. So, there'll be an opportunity probably in the near, as I'm trying to move, for Enoch, it's very easy to carry.
Yeah, go ahead, Dick.
I just wanted to share why this synergy with the First Nation is so critical. Because the ulterior motive from my perspective is that by tapping into money from the federal department of the Indian Affairs, as I call it, where there is a wide priority, well as this in getting the line from where it ends down to the First Nations. And then you can put in the fee or splice to bring it around to the summer villages, which will reduce the cost of the summer villages, but also reduce any incremental costs, spur up costs that Forest B might have to fund to get it down there. And so, to piggyback grants utilized to get the water lines to the First Nation, that is, there's a symbiotic relationship between that water supply and water supply to some of the utilities.
Wait to spin off. Anything else? Well, I publicly want to thank you, Dick, for coming here and for the work that you, your firm, and yourself have done so far to date. Without you guys, we would be stumbling at great walls like we have been. And at least I see a little bit, you know, there's light in there, and we're in the right direction. And unfortunately, it can't just happen just like that. It's a process. And I think we're in the right direction, so I want to thank you very much, and hopefully we continue with it. Very much for your time. Okay, motion to step down for information?
Motion to step down for permission.
Thank you, John. All in favor? Carry. That's great. Well, you can hang around, or you can, whichever you like. I thought maybe Dave was coming, but he must have stayed home today, I guess.
If you don't mind, I, they started at six o'clock.
Yes, I sure did.
I was at court this morning, so.
Thank you very much. Like I say, once again, I appreciate it very much, and it, you know, it helps that everybody knows that we've got somebody in our corner that she can fight for, so thank you.
So, I would be quite prepared to come back on October 10th, lots of talk.
Yeah.
But to be in agreement with.
Yeah, Andrew promised he'll be there. I think it's the 12th, isn't it?
The 10th.
Is it the 10th? I'm sorry. Yeah, correct. Yeah, he promised me, and he gave me his number for his secretary who makes all the decisions, I'm sure. And she said that she will make sure he comes, so that'd be, that'd be great.
Thanks for deciding your question, which we, we're going to talk to you off in a positive way.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, Rob. All right, next order of business, Chamber Commerce, MOA. So, Donna, would you like to comment on that?
Thank you, worship. This is round two, and are you, are you going to play the table right now?
No, yeah.
I know that. I know that Chamber President went through this and then we had a couple of small, smaller things that the town wanted changed, section five, the treaty draft, section five, they had parked us, we went to town then, so we opened the product with the Chamber of Municipal Spirits, cleaned up that language, I tried to give it on us, make sure it didn't look like that we can charge, that they can charge, that moved that simpler. And that was, she was, she told us, please, and Cheryl, did the membership have any concern? The draft is from the membership.
They didn't have any concerns. The only thing they haven't located is a legislature that wouldn't have any, or they are, will be, will be, bring your guard. That's not a grant. And that, that's all. And I do have a diagram of the, of, I think, all of them.
If we can have, is that a plea?
Yeah.
If there's a, if there's a agenda, there goes.
And I'm sorry that it seems so long to do this, but it's trying to get all our workers and all our help on the weekend. It will happen. I'll try when.
Well, the other change was section four, the provides firework for chamber schedule events that require the park's fire pit and supervision. That change was provides firework for the chamber schedule so that the chambers not having to haul wood in and look after everybody that you got. And then B provides for the parks for used recharge groups, raising money from projects to help recharge the people that are covered. And that was really the motivator that the park had, that we looked at. We can attach, Carol, we can attach that map to the council. We can attach the plan, we can attach that map to the district. But we got that, you couldn't, no.
Yep.
I'll stand for questions.
Okay, so we will bring it back for finally after?
I don't think we need to, you worship.
You want to start here?
I guess this is an addition, this map, this will be addition as Schedule A, that's the park plan.
Okay.
The park plan. I think we cleaned up, in fact, I know we cleaned up all the little concerns. I know the chamber has seen it, the membership has seen it, talks about it. This, this draft was what they said and they, they were looking at changes. Let me just put draft two on here in case council wants to think about this for, for another time and wait a bit or?
I, I absolutely agree. We can just make a motion for it and approve it and then I can sign.
I'm fine with the memorandum. As far as the plan, I, I haven't had a chance to properly look at it. I, I, I don't, I don't have a capacity to attach any draft plan to it for us to approve because we haven't actually, we haven't discussed it.
Yeah, fine. Perfect. Would council appreciate that draft coming back at Cal with an R C attached to it and maybe Chamber representation to chat about it?
Yeah, if we're trying to approve or just allow specific, you know, designs and plans, that seems like a separate discussion.
Yeah, this is the first anybody here has seen it that I'm aware of. I thought at the chamber meeting at.
Yep. Okay, so, the motions bring it to the.
We can approve the MOA. Or they'll get that.
Okay, can I get a motion to that effect? Do you want me to get a motion? On favor? That's carried. All right. New business, oh, pardon me, yeah, new business. Request for funds, furnace replacements in the community hall. And I wasn't even aware that that's a problem, sir.
Worship, I see folks sending out kind of tag team this a little bit. We said, and chatted, the, 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 the,[1065.12]
Fair call. Anyways, yeah, I was just curious about what's the question. So section six, as we indicated in our R C spec.
Yeah, I don't know how finances at all, but they've had some pretty successful things, I think. And they've had a fifty and they've had some COVID fest. It must be generating some funds.
I mean, their budget was fairly constrained during COVID and not being able to get any rental revenue. But since then, I don't see the.
All right. Okay, you're looking for a motion to disapprove this or approve it or against it? Okay. So I guess the motion to. The way you want to do it?
I would, I would suggest to the mayor that the one count of two here financially exists or. On financial.
Okay. So would somebody like to make that motion?
Pick one or the other. You can say, and then you can just eat it or you can.
I'll move that we decline.
On favor? That is carried. Thank you.
What are you saying? It was very, very clear and articulated and there was never any ambiguity from day one.
I'll make sure I quote section six.
All right, eight point two audit fee adjustment and various costs. See if they don't send it.
Hi, I really hope this is the last time. So just out of curiosity, I had asked because our auditors indicated that they did not perform a 2020 pension audit, even though they audited our financial statements. So I inquired with L A P P. I said, who did the 2020 audit then? Because our auditors are saying that they didn't do it. And she came back and said, oh, 2020 is not done, nor is 2019. So we now have four years of pension audit to submit to the pension people. And well, every time I open a door, but 21, 22 are done. That's what I asked for last time. So we have 19, 20, 21, and 22. So the quote for these two years is a little bit higher because A, they didn't audit 2019, our auditors. So they have more testing is required so that they can assure that the controls were in place during that year. And they can talk that year, so they have extra testing to with $10,000. So adding this extra $10,000 will increase the audit fee to $36,500. So I'm asking for the extra 10. And again, part of that is extra $44,000.
This is when they get into it. That's going to be when our CFO was hopefully on leave. Then there was a lot of weird inconsistency that's probably going to be a higher cost there. Just A, I almost guarantee.
And I think so, I mean, if you want to add 15 in there, it's gonna add 15.
I have zero doubt that it will increase once they see that, hey, the CFO who had been doing this, he will suddenly was gone and there was nobody who was in charge of it. And it would have got very chaotic really quickly.
She goes there.
Yeah, she wanted, yeah, she wanted a medical, he didn't bear it up. But it kind of dropped the ball on a bunch of things there. So I, I can only imagine what they're gonna find.
Yes, so we can add 15 if we don't need it.
And is this our corporate auditors that pensioned?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So yeah, and then we scheduled it because she was originally going to do it like this week. There was nine, like the 21 and 22. But then when I added this different place, she's like, why don't you just, I can't come back and do it till the end of November. Cause they're booked. So she's like, I think it makes more sense to do all four years at once. And I said, I agree. And then, so now they're gonna come back at the end of November and do that. It gives us time to find it all because like there is a fault somewhere.
Yeah. It's gonna be chaotic. It'll be chaotic, yeah.
Yeah, of course.
I wanted to manage expectations. Assuming that because, you know, Faye was there would be better. Well, no, that's when she transitioned away.
Yes, so we can add 15 if you think that's probably better. And then it's Faye, right?
Well, then we're gonna come back again otherwise.
I hate asking for more money.
I don't know if that's going on, I guess.
All right, getting a motion to add 15,000 to the budget for the audit and the. On the pension.
Sorry, where are we pulling this from?
That extra M S I money.
Okay.
I'm just gonna use it all.
All right. Corey, thank you.
Yeah, I moved, yeah, okay, yeah, 15,000 of the M S I surplus revenue towards the L A P P audit. For 2019 and 2020.
Okay, on favor? That is carried. All right, eight point three, the New York Regional Housing Foundation. Corey, don't mind that.
Hey, so it's a weird awkward predicament because it's not actually for public disclosure yet. Because it's still waiting on C M H C to do an official announcement. But there is the project that the foundation had applied for rapid housing initiative funding to do an expansion at Gates Landing. That was approved, we're just waiting on them to do actual announcements, which sounds like it may be at the end of this month. Or sorry, the end of next month. But we'll have to be some up firm as far as I know, but I believe it was maybe the 27th tentative. In the meantime, for the provincial portion of the grant funding, the reporting requirements need to have municipal contributions of half a million, not just like pledged to the project, but literally received and counted for in their bank for the 15. So we, most municipalities have committed funding. The Duke County is still debating how much they wish to contribute or not. They're not hugely in favor of the cost breakdown based on influence assessment. They will likely contribute less than what they were expected to. Devon has in principle agreed, as far as I know, to support it. They just need to actually have a motion to move the money over. And then we're the only other odd man out who needs to make a decision on whether we're funding it. And if we're funding it, ideally, you know, having them receive the money prior to the 15th.
Second of November or October?
Yes, and so if we can't, don't want to, or we can't, or they can't get the money by the 15th. City of the Duke had agreed initially to backstop the whole amount if need be. So ideally, the Duke Foundation is going to invoice the City of the Duke for whatever balance is left over from everyone else. But they don't know what we're doing until we, you know, give them an answer. So they don't know how much bill City of the Duke until we make a motion on whether we are funding it. And if so, are we funding our entire requested amount, which would be the same as our annual requisition amount, which is 21, $2,300, something like that? In exchange for a $2,300 or so investment, we get to, you know, participate in an eight million, $8 million housing investment in the.
Now, can we put that in next year's budget though, because we do full fund it this year or?
That we have, in principle, it sounds like that's fine, but those discussions would need to happen with the City of the Duke. It wasn't clear on the reporting requirement to have the money in hand by the 15th back when the, you know, original supply for that. That requirement is kind of a surprise that it had to be there and paid for prior to, you know, the end of the year. And that's why it's kind of a weird sense of urgency of.
Really, no, we're just gonna do this like, I mean, you have a meeting prior to the 15th.
No, I told her though, that I would let her know how that meeting went and she can see the point.
Technically, it could come out of that M S I funding.
But somewhere.
Well, I don't, I mean, one way or another, we pretty much, everybody else, I know Calm or Warburg has already issued a check. I believe for about 15, you know, $15,000.
Yep, that'll be a vote, right? Yeah.
Yep, I saw that in there.
Calm is just waiting, Boulont is just waiting for an invoice. Part of Boulont and the City of the Fund and invoice. So L H F was going to invoice them, but they don't know the amount to invoice until they know who's contributing what. Cause it's not a requisition, right? We can't requisition municipalities for this, only for like the seniors housing. So it's a voluntary contribution essentially.
Then you would have no problem issuing a check before the 15th. So myself, I'm the deputy, I'm the sign for. And whoever like to wrap it up. Because anybody, any other discussion on it? I don't see any other way. We pretty much have to pay for it, everybody else.
Well, yeah, it would look fairly, fairly severe, you know, I think, you know, participate with things. Seems something I think we should, you know, contribute to, but.
I got a motion to issue the check and to get it out of the other side. Favor? Good, thank you. Thanks, Corey, for bringing that forward to us.
Yeah, sorry, with the last minute, just on Thursday, the sudden urgency.
Well, we know it's been coming.
Yes, but if you decide it urgently, you're actually getting the money with the.
Is it the amount of our?
It'll be the exact same amount to be at the requisition, yeah. Yeah, it's, the requisition was half a million and the contribution to the project is half a million. And it's also based on a compliance assessment, so it'll be the exact same dollar value.
All right. Okay, so I believe the next thing is the water feed study with Jared Kelly at Select Engineering. You're gonna get him on the phone?
You can.
As you can.
Oh, is he?
Can you hear me now? Am I coming through at all?
Paul, can you hear us?
I can hear you guys, no problem.
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, I'm just trying to get the video going here. It's a new machine and. Not used to it.
Press the camera button, Jared.
There we go. That's pretty close and bright.
There we go.
Okay, I'm just gonna log on to another machine here as well, just so I can share a screen with you. I assume everyone has a copy of the study and has read it and understands it in its entirety.
It'd be 20 minutes I had to skim through, but I've memorized it.
Okay, you should get a request here from either machine. All right, perfect. Now if I can just remember how to share a screen on this one.
Might have to let you share.
You have to give it up, yeah.
There we go. Host disabled.
Oh, of course.
Okay, here we go.
Yeah, I got it.
Perfect. All right, so what I wanted to do is just kind of go through this briefly with you. I guess some of the pinch points, some of the things that we found out. Kind of what the methodology was, our line of thinking, where we're at now and where we're gonna end up. So now, one of the first things we did was a lot of data acquisition. That was probably the most challenging part of this. Not surprising that a lot of these small municipalities don't have a lot of records, don't have a lot of ass builds for the old pump stations, that sort of thing. So getting a lot of the old information out of them was, was a challenge, especially in the pump houses where, you know, there's, there's no drawings or, or maintenance manuals or anything else. So we're still waiting for some of that data to come in, but we, we made some pretty good assumptions based on the information we could get out of them as for what their water usage was. So we needed to get the water usage to know how much water we need to supply. And then check that against all your licensing to make sure you guys could supply enough water. So the short answer is you guys have more than enough water to supply everybody we had in the study, which was Village of Breton, Village of Warburg, and then all of the summer villages around Pigeon Lake. So that's the good news. The bad news is. So the water license you guys currently have, I believe. By the time we add all the licenses together, it's just over 3 million per year and the usage we keep it around 900,000. So you have about triple of what you need, which, which is good. Means you can, you can add more municipalities or whatnot on down the line as, as things progress. So I would see this probably as a stage one of maybe a multi-state should need required be in some of the other. Municipalities and or, I guess there's no municipalities, but some of the reserves around there. I know that that was, there was some mention of that, that there maybe need some water down in those areas as well, so. With that, I guess, some of the items that we are still missing is the fire suppression requirement. So you see that, that was down there, that were shown in. In yellow type here, so. Water for Life doesn't really give a parameter of what people need for fire suppression. They leave that up to the municipality. So what we do is we look at it and say, okay, what does the current fire pump? How much can it pump? And then we take that capacity, times it by a duration, and we come up with a certain storage. So that's where we're at right now. And mostly what that's for is to see if the reservoirs within these municipalities are sufficient for current and for the growth as well. Okay, so one thing the Water for Life strategy does is they say, okay, what's the existing infrastructure like? And what's that existing infrastructure look like for a 20-year period? Right? In that growth in that 20 years, if there's an upgrade needed in the reservoir or pump house in the municipality, Water for Life wants to include that with the project to make sure it's good for 20 years. Now, what they do with that is it doesn't go towards the costs of. The water supply line project, but they include that in the overall budget to make sure they're not going back there in a few years to do some upgrades. If that makes sense. Okay, so that's why we have to look at everything kind of in whole for each municipality. Thorsby included, right? Any, any items within your current pump house that need to be upgraded for this water line getting included in that, in that costing as well. So that's one of the items we're still working on, still trying to find some, some capacities for some of those old fire pumps. The one in Warburg and in Breton, they're both natural gas powered. Backup fire pumps, right? That really have no information on them and they're, they're very old. So it still worked well, but just no information.
Jared, if I could.
Sure.
ATEC, ATEC in Edmonton did a lot of the stuff at Warburg. I want to say it was 2016 or so. And if you want, I can try to get you some information that I may have available on it. But yeah, a lot of the missing blanks with Warburg, I do somewhat have information.
That would be excellent, Corey, if you had that.
Perfect, and yeah, I'd say there's also, yeah, ATEC definitely should have a lot of additional information as well.
Yeah, like Warburg and, and Breton for sure. I mean, Breton's got a huge gap there. Keith was there forever. He's retired like a year or two ago now. The new operator, he's good, but he just doesn't have the history. And there's, like I said, there's no literature and everything. Warburg's pretty good. I mean, Rob's been there for quite a while, but there hasn't been that, that long continuity there. So that'd be great if you had that.
Yeah, I can take a look. It's, it's gonna be buried away somewhere, but I will have it buried away somewhere if I can find it.
Perfect. Okay, one of the other items we did, I guess, is the projected water demands of the populations within each municipality. So we went back on the last census report and we looked back on censuses previous to that. Kind of did a, a chart on that to see what the population was, growth was in each municipality. It's kind of up and down through the years. As of late, there's been a kind of a decrease in population from a lot of. Planning documents, they want to use a two or a 3% growth through each year. We felt that was pretty aggressive, especially looking back on the historicals. So we used, was a 1% growth rate through all the municipalities. If I can find that sheet here. Kind of shows you where your projected populations would be in 20 years. Yeah, here we go, right here. So, you know, and I could be out to lunch on the existing population. You guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but right around 1,000 people, right? 967 is what we had in the last census. And then the one, as a 1% growth, so in 2046, it would be around 1240. And you can see the, probably your biggest growth there is around the summer villages. What we did with that is we had a, a population for the summer. And then we also, in some of the reporting, there had a rate of what the full-time year-round people were there. And it was around 25, 25 to 30%. So we, in different reports, so what we did is we split that at, I think, 27 and a half percent, if I'm correct. So that the, the winter population is 27 and a half percent of what the summer population is. Now, the reason we did that was the summer population you have to design for because, of course, they're gonna need the water demand. And then the winter, as, you know, people aren't using the vacation homes or whatever, you still have a small demand there, but you have the ability to service both the summer and the winter populations. Now, those numbers may be skewed. The census there was fairly old, so I think we've kind of erred on the side of caution there. But we don't want to put the population too big because it'll upsize all the piping and pump houses and everything and really drive costing up as well. So we're trying to do something that's, that's realistic, but it's still future-proof so that we, we have that expansion room. So with that being said, I'll show you a couple of these charts, I guess, to show you where your biggest challenges are going through the, through the different areas. So this is an overview map of the, of the location that we've chosen for the water lines now. Makes sense down, straight down 778 to supply the Pigeon Lake area. And of course, from there, we'd have a large pump house. That way, to have a distribution line around the lake. Would tee off in there and go into Warburg and then as well down into Breton. So we kind of picked the most direct routes that made the most sense. Tried to follow, you know, existing roadways, that sort of things. So we weren't looking at a lot of land acquisitions and that sort of thing. So pretty typical for any of the water alignments. This one here is, this was a bit of a shock to me and I'll explain this because probably most people don't understand it. What we've got here is this is the profile right along 770. Or sorry, 778, all the way down to Pigeon Lake. So this is elevation, so this is the existing ground profile that we got along the center line of the highway. So you can see the elevation gain as you go towards the lake. So there's almost, what is it? 130 meters of elevation gain as you're going towards the lake. And then, of course, it drops off into the lake. So that was surprising to me. I would have thought that there wasn't that much relief and that it was a lot flatter. So that's what you see here, this hydraulic grade, grade line that shows the water pumping through the pipeline, the losses and where you need to install booster stations to pump it back up to the top of the hills. So that's where you get one, two, three booster stations along here before we can get into a reservoir for Pigeon Lake. And then the other, the other areas were, were fairly flat or flatter or rather. But we still, you know, again, pumping it uphill a lot of the way to all these other municipalities.
Is it 130 meters?
Yeah, towards Pigeon Lake, yeah.
That's a lot, I mean, obviously, it clearly goes uphill that way, but well, it's just, that's shockingly more than I would have expected.
Yeah, yeah, I was surprised as well. So in some of the old documentation we were reading, one of the items that it had mentioned was about the drainage basins and transferring water from one basin to another. And that kind of shows that, that, you know, the. The North Saskatchewan Basin or the basin you guys are in right now would be north of this, this peak. And then the whatever feeds the Pigeon Lake basin is kind of over that. So, you know, we'd still be in that situation where we're taking water from the North Saskatchewan and discharging it into another basin. So we'll go into a little more detail on that in our reporting as well, just, just so that's clear. It may be showing us an advantage because you're actually taking water into a basin that's claiming they're short on water, right? So when I say we're, we're adding water, I guess it's through the sewage discharge, right? So once we give them the water for, the bottom of the water, it goes down the sewer systems into the lagoon structures and then gets dumped out into that, out of the basin.
And I know at one point it was discussed that doing, doing that piping water across that divide would require piping the sewage back so that it's draining into this watershed.
It, it doesn't state that in the requirements, but you may be correct.
I don't like that, was like an unsurmountable obstacle previously. So I don't know if something's changed or not, but.
Oh, I will look into that and that's one of the items I had for, for questions for, for environment to see if that was gonna be an issue and how that was to be dealt with, so. All right, so that's kind of the, the long and short of it. We've threw some preliminary costing together kind of for each section. Now, these are very rough costs. We still have to confirm some sizing and some booster station, pump sizing and that sort of thing based on that fire flow calculations and then all the upgrades. So breaking this up into components is, is kind of how we did it because they're a little bit different sizes, a little bit different. So coming out of Thorsby, and this is just for pipeline supply. This is no reservoir upgrades, no lagoon upgrades, anything with that. So, you know, if you want to add them all up, you kind of get down to, was it 37? 4383. Almost, almost $10 million just to get it down into a reservoir at Pigeon Lake, okay? And then going west to Warburg, here about 6 million to get it to Warburg and then another 5.2 to get it to Breton. So about 11 million for that lake. What we also did is looked around Pigeon Lake now. There's a, it's a long ways around Pigeon Lake. It's around 45 kilometers all the way around. And of course, you've got populations in Pigeon Lake, kind of on the north half and, and on the south half and real sparse population on the west side and on, on the, I guess, southeast side there as well. So we split that up into a kind of two costs here. So if we did the north side only, we've already got the reservoir here around 3.2 million. If we went all the way around the lake to supply with everybody, it'd be around 12.3 million. Right? So you wouldn't add these two together, it's either one or the other. Now. That becomes, I guess, if we look at everything as a whole, we're in around a $30 million project.
Of the, of the economic feasibility of, like, why would we do all the way around the lake? Like, that's a huge extra cost and there's not, there's not a sufficient population over there to justify it as far as I would think.
100%, so that, that's where I'm going next. So I guess it's not up to me to decide what the economic feasibility is, right? I mean, I'll.
Yeah, it has factored in any sort of, you know, demand or, or economic factor in that, you know, in proposing that. I guess is my, my question. If you haven't, that's fine. I, I guess that's not your, your field, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, you know, I mean, looking at it, I guess, in my, in my report, I should say, Corey, I'm not gonna put in there, you know, why this, this doesn't economically make sense, right? Now, if you were to look at it, the population around. Now, if you were to look at it, the population around Pigeon Lake is way bigger than Warburg and Breton. I mean, Warburg, we got a population of six seventy six, Breton's five sixty seven. The south side of Pigeon Lake, I think, is around fourteen or fifteen hundred people, so. If you took this leg out, right, we're in around ten million. And you added that to this, right, you'll get all the way around the lake and you gotta pick bigger population to serve. Now, from the aspect of selling water, the more population, the more water you can sell, right?
Distributed population on the on that side is, I guess, my thought, there's a lot of very small pockets of summer villages and such, whereas the north side is a lot more concentrated. So it's a lot more viable, I'm just trying to.
You you get almost the same kind of thing on the south side where you got, you know, Mamute and. Um, I wish we had a bigger map here. You got Grandview and and all those places, it's it's kind of the same, you you definitely got a larger population on the north. But on the south, you've got a pretty good leg there too, it's just it's getting there, I mean, there's a few sparse little areas along the way that you could service, but. You know, like I said, maybe that's a, maybe that's a stage two thing, right, comes in later.
Well, and and the thing to remember always, I guess, Jared, is that like, I mean, this is just volunteer, this is nothing in. You know, Warburg for has made it very clear that they don't want anything to do with us and. And I certainly don't want this report to reflect to them to think we're we're pushing on this evidence. Now we got this party, you have to get this water, and I'm sure that's probably what's gonna happen here next. Is I'm gonna hear from Warburg and say, no, you guys are shoving water down. And I just hope everybody here, I realize, I'm sure everybody in this room realizes that and uh. I just, Warburg, I've I've told them many times and they don't believe us, they think we're trying to. Shove it down their throat, and we are, this is just for facts and for speculation, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, well, you're exactly correct, Mr. Mayor, I mean, this is just putting the cost to it and looking at the uh at the population. Just to see what uh what it is, what it would cost and if, you know, is there a benefit, right, so.
Yeah, and and one other thing, you know, I'm actually kind of curious is that, you know, maybe. And and we we didn't do it, we didn't ask to get it done, is that, you know, maybe maybe Kalmar should have been part of this.
That's what I want to say is realistically, Kalmar often gets gets rationed water because that's the end of the line and then end up or you run the dry.
Yeah, correct.
I think honestly, you'd have a better uh a better likelihood from a from a. The relationship and the and the willingness to collaborate and the.
Correct.
And the constant rationing from Epcor, Kalmar probably has more need and would be more agreeable either way to participating in such a. Arrangement and there's already a right away for the pipeline and stuff that gets us to Kalmar. I don't, I I I think that would be a far far better exercise.
Are you familiar with what Kalmar has there at all, Jared?
Yeah, they're 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 hooked into the Epcor line already, so that's a bit of a tangled web, so you. It's not a hard written rule, but it's it's pretty. Pretty, it's not written anywhere I can find it, but the you typically will not get two water connections to a reservoir, especially from a regional line. Um, so the fact that they're already on regional water. If we include that in the report, that might throw a red flag and just throw it right out the door right away. Um, the thing is, I know you can argue that they're not getting the water they need. But that's almost an agreement that they have to update with with Epcor, right?
Okay, no, that's fair enough to know that, that's a very good point, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I mean, someone someone at some point paid for that line to get to Kalmar. You know, if Kalmar's not happy with the service, I guess, why would they pay for another line to come in?
Uh, on the same, the same note, I I have no idea, Genesee has got to use. And the guy obviously uses a lot of non potable water, but obviously they use a lot of potable water as well, does anyone ever explored that?
I I, as as far as I know, I mean, there is a well at uh at Genesee.
I I don't know if there is a well or is this.
Yeah, there is a well and and I know exactly where it is, it's on the bypass road there and uh. But uh, I'm not sure who is uh something, I guess, to discuss with.
Oh, there's that little blue shack, that's, yeah, you take a turn on to the range, oh, no, blue shack, that's that's a well, okay.
And it's locked up and they uh, you have to have access to it, they give you the access and uh, but you can't drive in, the gate's locked. Not so sure, I guess that's something to ask.
They must be a fairly high user, I mean, there's a lot of a lot of staff there.
I I've been by there many times, I haven't seen a single person there yet, so I don't know.
Water for the power plant stuff, I mean.
I don't hope, I don't think it's for the power plant, I think it's for the farmers.
No, my my question is, has anybody explored if we're running pipelines and like, you might have a more viable, um, you know, market case. Be made for supplying Genesee than Warburg.
They had, you know, when they built that burnout there, they diverted. Remember to build that, all that water, all that on their burnout there for the plant, that's where all that water came from, it came, it was a diversion from the North Saskatchewan.
Yeah, but that's not true, like you say, I don't know what they're doing for their potable supply, I mean, there's a lot of, that couple, those parts of that drop a full a lot of the time, I don't know how many staff are in those there, but.
Good point, good point. Jared, where is uh the of Pigeon Lake on your map, or Samsung, uh, or Samsung TV, Samsung?
They would be kind of over in this, right here on this uh east edge, I guess.
That's what I thought, okay, I was just, I wanted to make sure that I was looking at the right end, okay, fair enough.
See if I can pull up on a map here, uh, can't see this. Uh, how do I do this now?
There we go.
Yeah, so you see down here, so if we're coming down. Seven, seven, eight comes right into Mulher, or sorry, seven, seven, eight comes into Mulhers. You know, you get down into Silver Beach and there's not a few, there're not a lot here, and then you get onto the, these are all reserved lands in here.
Okay, that big track there, okay.
Yeah, you you can pretty much tell all undeveloped, right, and that's what I was saying, if once you get into Mamute. Right, there's a small section that's not really developed and then it kind of goes all into development again along the road. Or sorry, along the beach, now, the only thing with these summer villages is they're. They're basically one road, both sides of the road, the odd little offshoot, but it's, you know. A long ways with very little population, but there there is some growth down there. Know the village at Pigeon Lake, I'm not sure where they get all their water from, I assume it's all wells right now, or maybe it's all cisterns. Um. Then once you get up, right around the campground is pretty much where it kind of all stops again. And then you want a little development in here and. Coming up the the west side, right, and then you get into, you know, into Mission Beach, right, and that's where it all starts again.
Yeah, makes sense, okay.
Yeah, but just to give you an idea, I guess, um. You're talking about going out to the Genesee plant?
I was, yeah, just I just I I don't know who's discussed what, when, why, I just, you know, had just thought of it now, I don't know.
That's a good idea, they've thought of it actually, let's, I mean.
I think they they probably have more staff than Warburg has population.
Yeah, so thirty two kilometers, kind of in around the same. Camera, what we had for uh for kilometers to Warburg, but. You know, around Pigeon Lake is around is forty four kilometers, so I mean, it's, anything's doable.
I mean, you hit Saint Francis a whole lot there, but then there's also, yeah, what's it called, they're down at Tupperbill. There's a few little, few little urban-esque kind of pockets, nothing too special, but there's a few little additional things along the road. Yeah, and Saint Francis is the same thing.
Yeah, I think a lot of people are on cisterns out there.
Yeah, you got a lot of egg out in that country, right, agriculture, so.
There there, yeah, and I mean, you know, one thing, you build a pump house down um near Pigeon Lake, right, then you can. You can put a truck fill and stuff off without to service some of the rural communities there too, right? Just another, another outlet for it, so.
Well, that truck fill can have RV water fills too around there, so now you're servicing the lake traffic.
Yeah, yeah, you could get a little bit of everything in there.
I have, I've, Jared, you and I can talk offline, but I have some uh, I have some uh edits that came from Mr., not edits, but some. Uh, more suggestions that came from Mr. Carter, so we can talk about that offline, he presented the example tonight, really nice suggestions. Uh, and uh, so we can, we can uh fit that into the opening language of this uh speech or this study, Jared. Kind of the opening salvo.
Yep, absolutely, this is a working document, so it's, I mean, that's why we wanted to get your feedback, your comments, uh. Just kind of go through what I did and why I did it, I mean, doesn't mean it's right, it's just the the best information we got at the time, so. That means if there's some comments. Get them through to Dawn, I get them to me and we'll look at them and and come up with some answers or some some edits.
All right, well, anybody have any other questions?
I guess just for, it was seriously, I think I get about engineering, they were just an engineering feasibility study. Is I, I mean, the 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 marketability of it, the actual economic feasibility is is far more relevant in in my. View of it, I mean, the other pipeline is irrelevant if no one's gonna buy it at the other end.
Right.
Is there any work on that?
Not yet.
Somewhere along the way that's occurring, I mean, it's all.
It's coming.
And then another grant.
Well, within the grant that uh Mr. Carter was talking about, about marketing thing, that there is, there was money in there, started after together.
See, I mean, this is all just kind of very pie in the sky, especially when I know that a lot of the involved parties are not interested, right, so.
Yeah, and and I think for the purposes of these study, we 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 went to our neighbors first.
Yeah.
And then we can branch out from here, so absolutely, uh, I know for a fact. I I think um Breton's more amenable than.
But they're a huge cost, if you don't do Warburg along the way, it's pretty hard to justify doing Breton.
Thousand percent, you betcha, so, so now that we at least have all the mileage and and the pipeline's at cost and then I I like a suggestion about looking to Genesee. Take a look at that, yeah, no, I don't have a problem.
I don't, I don't know what they're doing, maybe they're all set up, good, good to go, I I don't have any idea, but.
Yeah, it's hard to say, and if and bringing Enoch online, they have their own intake, Enoch has their own intake.
Yeah.
So now we bring that along and we can use, we can go underneath the river with Kiara's pipe, we can fit another two lines, I think, underneath the river with Kiara. Kiara's huge, you know, uh, uh, what they call it, an access pipe, I guess, right? So with Enoch comes a whole lot of federal funding, Alexis Dakota Sioux just got, they're out at uh. On Highway sixteen, they just got thirteen million.
Yeah, they go by auto way there.
Yeah, thirteen million for water distribution, pipeline. And and you know, through all this here, we've made it very clear that we have no money. We made it very clear that whatever we get out of that, that we want to buy, you know, because we're we're not putting any money into.
Yeah, you guys are talking, you know, eleven billion dollar price tags, I, well, I got twenty bucks.
Yeah, you just, I'll throw that in there, you know.
But I I guess, I know we can't afford that, we definitely can't afford it if nobody's gonna buy any water.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
We don't need another repeat of the reason we're in this, but just this is a grant, doesn't mean we can build it.
Right.
No, it it's study all the way, it's uh, and and these studies, also, we want these studies to be real life, real time studies, not pirate stuff.
Well, that's, I guess, what I was saying, yeah, I mean, it's a robust economic evaluation of the the reality of doing it.
Hundred percent.
If it's a thousand year return on investment, then we probably shouldn't be looking at it.
No, a hundred percent agree, and and eventually there's P two, P three partnerships and all that, that's, yeah, I don't even want to get started in that yet. I don't even want to think about that just yet, but there's also investment in in that, but that's later, that's actuarial stuff, so. Um, I will say this, that, uh, and I can say this over council, Epcor is. Most interesting with us right now, just interesting. And what I mean by that, and I'm not being cagey, is that they're. They've really been hammering Enoch to work with them. And Enoch is not interested, only because Everton is building right around Enoch. Epcor will only supply to the casino, to the resort, will not supply to the housing, the buildings, et cetera.
Why not?
Exactly, they said they're on the capacity, yet they're funding all the houses all around, that that's all Epcor water.
Well, that's the same problem that Kalmar keeps having, they say, no, we supply Everton first, and if there's any sort of low water conditions or anything, they. Start cutting off Kalmar when.
Yep, hundred percent.
They have no other source of water.
That's right, so Enoch's pretty cagey with them, and uh, they just, but the, what Enoch said to me the last time is uh. You're on Epcor's little radar list, so that's okay, that's all right. So, as uh, as Dick said earlier, we're one step at a time, we're just working it one step at a time, and there is no way we're gonna commit this municipality sum. It's never gonna be able to do, oh, gosh, no.
That is not the legacy I want to meet.
No.
That water recuperation plan should have been a two hundred thousand dollar option instead of an eight million dollar option, I don't want to end up with that problem again.
Yeah, no, and I totally hear you, and that's not where we're at.
Yeah, perfect.
But I I I like the way you you characterize it, right, because we have to keep that in mind all the time, anytime we're gonna do something. Is is this one sustaining, can we do it, how do we do it, what's their cost, what's their return rate in the B F, and those things will start to come through Cindy. After a while, so we're not gonna pull a trigger until we really know what's going on, but right now, we have a lot of for-turn work to do, and we're actually moving up the ladder of the things we have to do.
Oh, yeah, I'm happy to explore, I just.
No, we're not pulling the trigger yet, no, oh, no, no chance. Well, we should let uh Jared go, I guess, is there anything else for him here?
Is he done, are you done, Jared?
Uh, yeah, the only thing I wanted to add, I guess, when you're, you know, Corey had mentioned about marketability and whatnot, so that's, I guess. Where we, the approach to put all of that stuff into the report. Um, you know, we have to put all the costing, all the information in there, that goes in for the Water for Life Grant. And they look at it all, and I guess they they kind of evaluated on that, say, okay, what are the costs? And what's the servicing area, right, now, what's that magic number for those guys, I I don't know, right? So that's where I was, you know, kind of throwing those numbers out there, and we can talk about that some more later before we finalize the report. Uh, you know, what do we include as, you know, a part of this, you know, it doesn't make sense to go. All the way around the lake for that extra ten million dollars, that might kill the project, or maybe we don't go to Warburg and Breton because there's not a big demand out there and. You know, they do have a fairly good source of water at the moment. But maybe we show it as, you know, we, in the future, we can add on to that, and we'll we'll take that into the design considerations, right, so. Um, I've got to do a little bit more background just with upper environment and and just see what um. Kind of offline, see what their their process is to see, you know, just massage this for the the best way we can, right?
Yeah, I I know, like, the uh, the Alexis project you were talking about earlier, I was out, I recall the Epcor, we were doing doing some work over there, there's, they have fire hydrants all through the. Like the countryside out by Auto Way now, uh, as a result of that, it kind of like. What is the benefit of that, is there a reason we should be looking at, like, talking with with the county about that, like, I, I'm assuming that the fire suppression. Was beneficial for their residents, you know, insurance and everything, is that something that, is that why they have all these hydrants? And if so, should we be talking to the county as well?
I don't know why they would do something like that, that's.
I I thought it was weird, which is, you know, why it caught my attention, but yeah, they they did, there's all along the road, all the way up uh. Towards what do you, uh, oh gee, I forget, the name of that little lake over there.
Uh, not Seba.
Lexington.
From on the way to the uh.
Over a beach like that.
No, the uh, east, east from Auto Way, all along there is hydrants. And like they were stalling, I assumed it was because it was somehow beneficial insurance wise, that they were running a pipeline either way to include hydrants. I assumed was somehow offsetting the cost by lowering risk, you know. So I don't know, like, say, if that's right, that's what I assumed, but. It seemed very odd.
It's a strange one, I mean, we're finding that, um, you know, especially in some of the counties where we're running some big water lines, we run all these hydrants in the ditches. For really no reason, because they they they're not close enough to fight fire on sight and they're not gonna drive anything in the, you know. You're not gonna park a fire truck on the side of the road and then drag a hose three hundred feet into the into the yard to go fight a fire, right, so it's. They're kind of redundant, a lot of the municipalities are just bagging them because they don't want to maintain them and the water goes staying in the lines.
What if it's some kind of federal requirement of the of the federal branch or something?
Yeah, like I said, it seemed odd, but it like they, it caught my attention because it was so off, like it's, yeah, I, yeah.
A phone.
Is it Dallas, like you're thinking of?
Yeah. I think so, yeah.
That's directly east.
Yeah, I don't know. That's that's a strange one to me, too.
Yeah, I, yeah, every every few miles along the side of the road, just, you know, ten meters off the road or whatever, just, you know, close enough. They have, and I assumed it was for fire purposes, but like there are other fire hydrants, right? Don't know what else you'd use them for besides fighting a fire, you know, like a tanker, truck, or whatever.
Yeah, they might be access points just to pull water up. I don't know. That's a strange one.
Well, I guess, as I was asking, I don't, I I assume it had to be more than just an access point, because it seems excessive for an access, but.
It does, yeah.
So I don't, if there is a way to recoup some costs or get some extra partners, but doing that, you could look at it, I guess.
Yeah. I'll find out what the deal was with the Alexis Dakota and see, I'll see whether there are fire hydrants there. You brought me in trade now, too.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe there must be some sort of economic benefit, or they wouldn't have done it.
I agree. All right, anything else? Okay, well, thank you very much, Jared. Appreciate that.
Well, thank you, guys. It's always good to see you.
I'm sure we'll be talking to you some more. Yeah, well, we'll talk next week sometime or the week after, Jared.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Thanks, Jared.
Yeah, motion to accept the feed study from elected during for information. So in favor, Karen, and next, eleven point two. Cindy, very important. That's you again?
Yeah, me again.
It's all the fun stuff.
You guys have comments on it? So did it come through?
Do you?
There's no, there's no link in here. Does anybody have any questions? Do you have any other questions? Like you just gave it to Carol.
Do you want it off?
No, it's okay. I can use Carol. I can give it to you on the done. If any, I just, if anybody has any questions, because I don't have them.
Oh, the council has it.
Basically, we're, we're, right now, we're at a, we're at a positive of eight hundred fourteen thousand, but there's lots to come. Like, I think there's two more payments for the school requisition, and then there's two more debentures, like September, December.
Yeah, yeah, there's, yeah, quarterly, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, isn't school one just a lump sum?
No, we pay it every quarter.
It's weird, okay.
Yeah.
I thought, I always assumed it was a lump sum.
It's every quarter. They take it out of the bank automatically every quarter, and then they like adjust it, because they don't even, I can, they said that's the intent at the beginning of the year or the end of, like, and and then they, they don't even set their actual rate till, like, the end of, like, and then they adjust our last payment, so it's kind of weird.
Okay, yeah, no, I just always assumed it was a lump sum.
Yeah, no, it comes out every quarter.
Used to be. Long time ago, it was a lump sum.
Especially once a requisition like that and stuff. I don't know, it seems weird to be doing, like, installments when it's a requisition, but.
Yeah, I think a lot of smaller towns and villages, I think, complained quite a few years ago.
Well, I guess, the way interest rates are, I mean, the longer we leave that money sitting in our account, the better, but.
Yeah.
Just never, that goes on my mind, it's.
Yeah.
Every quarter, okay.
Yeah.
The end of September and then, or end of December.
End of December, yeah. I guess the only question I had, and we've already been talked about at the hall, over over in the hall.
Oh, I think that was in.
The church, okay.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Yes, I do believe that.
Okay. Paid some hefty bills, been the last little while. We paid for our water meters, we paid for our RCMP, we paid for insurance. Some fairly big bills.
Yeah, it's a big one. And unfortunately, but the, not unfortunately, but the grant money that we've asked for from MSI and stuff, like the fund, we already have that money. We've already been given it, so it's not like there's going to be just one flux of cash. We've been sitting on it for a few years. The only thing we got was a payment from the gas tax, or CFB now it's called, but we did get a payment from them this year, but the rest, the MSI, we've had that money for, been sitting.
Same with the interest rates later, that's great, that's it.
Yeah, well, we've been using it, but.
Do you have any other questions for Cindy? No, kind of motion to accept the very point for information.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In favor, Karen. So I guess that completes a nest if we've got any, you're the only public here, Carol. Do you have anything you would like to say today?
Uh, the only thing I'd like to say, sorry, you want to say something?
No, I'm just stretching, sorry.
Oh, I would like to invite you to the October fourteenth Wellness Fair. Is anyone coming from this council? Oh, you're there?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking here right now.
I don't know if you even know what day of the week that is.
It's Saturday. This Saturday, it's.
And what time is that?
It's October the fourteenth. It's from nine thirty to three. It's an all-day, um, and, but your wife.
Yeah.
Can you get lunch, right? Free lunch. You just walk in, everything's free.
Yeah.
You get.
Okay, well, I certainly will make an appearance. I don't know if I'll be here all day, but.
Well, that'd be great.
Yeah, I don't have any, it doesn't look like I have anything conflicting, so I probably will be there.
Cory, if you, you and your wife could come.
I I, if I don't, like I said, I don't have my full schedule. It doesn't look like I have anything, but I don't want to say one hundred percent for sure, but I believe I can come.
It would be nice to have one of those stations. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, she will be there. She will be introducing the Enoch friendship performance. When I get my job done, I'll give you what time it is. Yeah, you can still help me. And if I don't, I'll.
And where is that money? That's part of that grant?
Yeah, yeah, for everything.
Yeah, okay. Anybody have any else you have? Pardon? Yeah, nine thirty.
Questions? So I just was, can we make a note of this, Cindy, for our org meeting next month? I think I recall I was talking to Tracy about this last year when we picked the meeting for the next year. I believe we changed Decembers just due to the fact that we didn't, we did the first and third week in December for that meeting. So I was just gonna say, make note of that, maybe. And then, why do we have love library? Hmm, I'm trying to, Donna, do you know anything about the seventy-fifth anniversary? We haven't heard anything since we brought it up. Is there, do you know anything on that front?
Well, usually, no, usually now it's a council perspective to hit the budget and and help us start planning, because it is your anniversary.
Okay, so we.
Yes, she was looking at some stuff, wasn't she?
Yeah, we've talked some ideas around, but.
There was some money, I believe, for like every twenty-five-year anniversary.
There's nothing.
There's nothing smart about it. It's got to be something.
There's money for a hundred, but not seventy-five, because we look, yeah.
So we we can talk through some ideas, but it is council's anniversary. You're representing the town. So I would suggest that maybe give a consideration for budget discussion, about your ideas, what you want, what you want to see, and what kind of celebration you want. That would be most helpful. We can have a good discussion of budget. Sure.
I know the chamber is coming up with some good ideas, so, um.
Good, now we want to be partnered with them, yeah.
If there's any funding that's available, I'm sure they will be more than happy to, I don't want to discuss it now, but.
No, we, I mean, we were planning to partner with them, obviously. We can't do it without them anyhow, so, yeah.
And then, has the library been invited to do their budget presentation? Because when we had our meeting last week, Tracy suggested them that October tenth would be when they would need to come.
Yeah, I think everybody's had their letter.
Okay, and it's all that same date, October tenth? Okay, good.
Yeah, their invitation letters, yeah.
Okay, and then my last question, do we have any, like, thought process? Are you waiting till the org meeting to discuss budget dates, planning?
Oh, it's like probably the weekend after the Remembrance Day weekend is kind of what I'm thinking, November eighteenth or whatever.
Your meeting is for your committees and for the review of your bylaw. So we do the, if we're going to do the org meeting, we do that, and then we shut it off.
Pointing out, naming the.
Yeah, because that's, but that's the meeting. Yeah, but budget, I'm, I'm thinking the eighteenth and like nineteenth for budget, like the two days.
Fairly certain or tentative still?
If it's okay with everybody else, but yeah, that's kind of what.
Yeah, I'll put it in my calendar. If it's probably going to be a thing, but yeah, okay.
Is that November, Cindy?
Yeah.
Eighteenth and nineteenth?
I think that's what I had told you before, wasn't it? Right on that.
I think it's good.
Okay. Because I think, yeah, can't, couldn't have it Remembrance Day, right?
Eighteen, nineteen, eighteen.
Nineteenth, yeah.
And were you questioning last year's December meeting dates? Is that what you were going to?
Well, yeah, because Shelley hits.
So we did do the first and the third last year, yeah, because I have my calendar.
I thought with this, yeah.
It would be the same, it would be the same, this and the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we'd only get one meeting in.
And then it's Christmas.
Yeah, that definitely would.
But we'll do that, because we set those at that work meeting, don't we?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah. But and I would like to recommend for your council's consideration, set them for the whole year.
I would find that very helpful. Yeah, for the budget meeting, were you thinking like nine to noon sort of thing, yes, just like that, with my calendar, so I don't speak to anything.
I was thinking ten to eleven.
Ten to eleven, okay, that's.
Do you want to start at nine or do you want to start at ten?
Do you want to start at ten to one, or you want to get it definitely for me?
Don't matter to me. I don't like mornings, so later we start.
I like, well, because two, because I have to drive for it, so I have to get here. Ten o'clock would be perfect for me.
Ten to one.
Yeah, just like I said, I'll make sure, book it off, like, make sure it's scheduled in as well.
And they're open to the public, so we'll advertise that again, ten to one.
So if we change the meeting dates in December, I'll still be absent for one of them.
Holidays are plenty, right? I'm very, I'm all for holidays.
But if we left it at the first, it's for the fourth, but no matter, it's all about the day.
Yeah.
So it's just on the.
I'm not coming.
What day is that?
Well, I think we'd schedule it for Saturday and Sunday, and if we don't, we, Sunday, but.
People, November eleventh is the.
It's Remembrance Day.
Remembrance Day, so I know.
So the eighteenth and the nineteenth.
I know they'll, I'll be going to the.
Ceremony.
School ceremony.
It's the week then after.
Oh, it's the week after.
Yeah, I would do it on Remembrance Day.
You're very insult.
I think that would be very rude.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
I said I wouldn't do it on Remembrance Day, so so we get after it.
Okay, gotcha.
Eighteen, sixteen.
Jared's going to hear mine himself on this, yeah.
He's going to be like, where is everybody?
Now, Cindy, the October twenty-fourth is, I believe, our org and regular.
Yeah.
Because we have to have it before the end of the month. So what we'll do with the org meeting on the twenty-fourth is we go, org meeting first, tablet off, and if there's anything for regular, we shut that meeting off, we're going to regular. Or, yeah, be regular.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Org meeting doesn't take very long, do they?
No, no, it does. You're just structuring your committee meetings, you're structuring your meetings, and you're looking at your meeting procedures bylaw. Good, it's it's supposed to be updated every year. You may be changing, you may not, but we do have to go through it.
How does that look?
It'll be seven, seven, okay, regular, yeah.
It's a regular council night.
Yeah, org first, council regular next, because we do have to pass meeting minutes, so irregular council meeting might be just passing meeting minutes. We're on target with a lot of things this year, which is really, really exciting.
Yeah.
Auditors are here tomorrow, you know, do their pre-testings. All right, buddy. Anything else?
Tomorrow, Thursday.
Nothing else, though? Motion to adjourn?
They're here Thursday.
Sally? You can make that motion.
In favor. Done? Karen, you got that off? You got the seatbelt off?
Give her a second. Settle down, settle down.
Let's see, I'll go to do that.
Everybody would be wishing they were here.